Call me in order, please. Ms. Whitby, if you call or roll.
Yes, sir. Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson is absent. Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Here.
McCormick is present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to stand as Councilmember Taylor leads us in prayer and pledge.
Right with me. Father God, thank you for this opportunity to be before you on this evening in February of 2018. Lord, thank you for our military. Lord, thank you for our national leaders. Thank you for our local first responders, our police, our fire, and for all the opportunities that we have before us to make decisions for the great city of North Little Rock. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions that we must make tonight and lead us in the things that we must do in the future for the city of North Little Rock. In these things, we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Come in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second. On the motion.
And to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Communications.
Anybody want to pull a communication? Thing done, how about a motion to accept? So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, I'm showing no presentations tonight. Unfinished business 1811, that's going to be held.
Okay.
Consent agenda, anybody want to pull a consent agenda out?
I do, number R 1826.
Twenty-six.
Which one?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Pull eighteen-two, R 1818.
Which one, I'm sorry? Eighteen-eighteen?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Ma'am.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't know if we're going to pull it or not, but I'd like to add Alderman Height to our eighteen-twenty-six, or twenty-three.
Twenty-three, that objection, we'll add Alderman Height to that.
Thank you.
All right, okay, we're going to pull twenty-six and eighteen. How about a motion to accept all the others on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Eighteen-eighteen, please.
A resolution reappointing Tom Brown to the North Little Rock Planning Commission Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
How about a motion? Move for adoption.
Second.
Well, I had to do an awful lot of lobbying today to get this thing passed. But, Ms. Whitby, call or roll.
Yes, sir.
Ross. Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Tom is in the audience. Tom, as always, stand up and let us thank you for all of your service. Thank you so much. We know the Board of Adjustments is in good hands as long as you're on it, so thank you for serving in that position.
Thank you very much.
Okay, twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Arkansas Regional Innovation Hub, Inc.
How about a motion? So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
This is not necessarily, you know, I talked to you about this to get more information on this, and Windrock International has taken over their innovation hub in June. There was a contract that was signed at the time with Innovation Hub evidently and Windrock International, and I was just wondering, can we get, I don't know who has that contract, just to see if they're doing what is in the actual agreement with Windrock, just kind of keep up with that during the year, because the whole, everything has changed since it was originally, you know, built the innovation hub, so.
Aaron, have you got something like that, that shows the agreement between Windrock International and, would you get Ms. Ross and all of us, if you'll get it to Ms. Whitby, she will send it out to everybody?
Okay.
Sure.
And then the other thing that we also discussed, because I, you know, the more I talk and ask questions about the innovation hub, and everything, everything I get back, it all goes back to this is economic development, and we discussed today that next year, under the budget, if it's economic development, then it needs to be under economic development budget, you know, with Todd Larson, and move that over there. So, you know, with that in mind, next year, we definitely need to make sure that it's under economic development.
And let's look at that, there might be more than just the innovation hub that needs to go under also.
That's, I agree.
Okay. On the motion.
Ross.
Ma'am.
Questions?
Sorry.
So, again, under the innovation hub, I saw an email about leadership, changing leadership, I mean, who's at the helm over there now, what's the leadership structure look like?
Aaron's the interim director, Joel left, Joel Gordon left, Aaron's interim director. I had a meeting last week with the CEO, came down here from Washington, and we had a great meeting. They've got some good prospects for a new executive director, and I wouldn't privy to the list or anything, but they're working on that, and he gave me a complete commitment that they were focused on our hub and making it a showplace for, across the country and internationally. So I feel very comfortable about the future of the hub. On the motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
New business, R 1833, Councilmember Witcher.
Call it, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an access agreement between the city of North Little Rock and Indian Hills Community Club appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross. Questions?
Questions, okay.
Hey, just to clarify, this is for three years, correct?
Yes.
This is for three years.
Yes, ma'am.
This is not thirty-five thousand a year, it's for three years.
No, just one time.
One time for three years.
Yes, ma'am.
And this opens the pool to anybody that wants to go to the pool, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
It's not, you know, you don't have to have a membership, you just show up and pay your entry fee? Is that it?
Yes. Visitors, the numbers were unbelievable.
And I meant to pick that, as a matter of fact, I looked for the note when I left home. You know, we're running a couple thousand people every summer through that, through that thing. At five dollars a head, I think last year, we collected almost eight thousand dollars. That, you know, that gives you an idea, and it's dropped slightly, but the first year we did it, it was almost fourteen thousand dollars. And that's above the normal membership, and that's above the daycares that use it also.
That's guests, you know, or people off the street, so it's open to the public.
And I just want to say this once again, and I say this every, I know I said this three years ago, is the city has no facilities in that area in Wardor. There's no pools, there's no rec centers, there's nothing in that area. So, you know, ten thousand dollars a year for a pool is a pretty doggone good deal.
I agree.
Yeah, we make a good partner.
Yes.
We don't want to run it.
Right. No, the city does not want to run it.
So, thank you.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R 1834, Mayor Smith.
Are we calling that? I got something emailed.
There was a typo in the one that we originally filed, and so Diane substituted the one without the typographical error in it, but it's ready.
Okay, call it.
We need to amend that.
A resolution repealing resolution number 8837, which declared 60155 Terrence Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to be a public nuisance and condemneded.
Do we need to amend in the new one?
You need it?
Yes.
Yes, that'd be my amendment.
Is it a Scrivener's error?
It is, in the title, it says Terrence Drive, it's actually Terrace Drive, and so it's just Scrivener's error, it's a typo.
Without objection, we'll just, we'll call it a Scrivener's error, and we don't need it.
Okay.
Okay. On the motion.
On the motion, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R 1835, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city attorney to enter into a settlement agreement in the case of Dam River Boat Company LLC Greenway Dining Club, Inc. versus City of North Little Rock, Pulaski County Case Number 60CB-16-4740 appropriating funds.
How about a motion? Move for adoption. I have a question, though, I just stuck. Give me a second. You want to give me a second?
Second.
On the, yes, sir. Well, based on what I read in the newspaper yesterday, this is the most economical way out of this mess that we got ourselves into. Well, you know, there's always a risk in litigation, and after, you know, our legal staff, we thought that sixty thousand dollars was probably our hedge against a three hundred fifty thousand dollar settlement. And, so, yeah, what was in the paper was my statement, and I probably need to keep it to what was in the paper, I don't want to add a little too much on legal proceedings. So, I'm not happy about this, but it's got to be known. We could be a lot unhappier, could be. I don't think so, but could be. Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes.
Okay. You know, I guess the only concern I had about that was that with the loss of the Parrot, or whatever we wanted to call that, that big boat, you know, we weren't able to reasonably accommodate them, and I, you know, it kind of bothered me, you know, that we were, we were in litigation regarding it.
I've said no for a year.
Yeah.
And, so, and I agree with you. We were unable to reasonably complete the lease, and the lease was only had about three or four more months. So, I agree. However, our risk assessment and our lawyers advised me to agree to this option, so I did.
I guess, I guess I am curious, Mayor, if we had had to pull the Parrot away, what kind of position would that have left those folks in and left the city in?
If it had sunk?
Yeah.
If it had sunk, it would have cost us a million dollars to pull it up out of the bottom of the river.
In movement, yeah.
Yeah, and so I had, we had to get it out of there. It was slowly sinking, so, you know, the only thing I can tell you is that I assure as long as I'm mayor, we'll never have another lease like that again. I mean, we'll have, we'll have our backside covered no matter what happens. And, so, you know, I mean, if you, if y'all want to bow up like I did and take it to trial, we certainly can.
Yeah.
Can't we, counsel?
We can.
This offer is contingent upon your approval. So, both, you know, we'll go to trial, we have to. I just, I think this is the best thing to do, let's just get it gone. Most of us are going to go to legal, their legal charges anyway, probably, so. Ms. Ross?
On the plus side, the gang, the walkways were sold on gov deals, so it's not like there's, we got, we recouped a little money on that.
There you go.
So.
Any other comments, questions? On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R 1836, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 105 East Emily Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second. Call public hearing, anyone here to speak on 105 East Emily Street? Seeing none, close of public hearing, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R 1837, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 1006 North E Street in the city of North Little Rock.
How about a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call public hearing, anyone here to speak on 1006 North E Street? Seeing none, close of public hearing, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
R 1838, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 4705 Atkins Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call public hearing, anyone here to speak on 4705 Atkins Street, 4705 Atkins Street? Seeing none, close of public hearing, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Coordinates is 01808, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance establishing job classifications and numbers of employees for each department of the city government of North Little Rock for 2018, declaring an emergency, first reading.
Motion suspended?
My, 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 motion to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Do you have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And a second. Maurice got the second, did you get that? Okay. Any questions, comments? On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
01809, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Wait, can I, can I make a quick comment? On this quota ordinance, I know that there was some question, you know, on the police and fire and everything, basically, there's no change as far as the fire department, the police, there's, because that was a question that was asked.
I can answer that.
Sure.
We're not going to change it actually until March, because that's when the grant actually runs out, so when that time comes, we will make changes. But right now, it's going to stay the same.
Okay, so there won't be any changes until March then, correct?
Right, if we decide to do that, yes.
If, if changes are made.
Right.
Got you. Okay.
Thank you. On the motion? We're there, all right, we're good. All right, let's go to 1809, and please call it.
Okay.
An ordinance allowing a special use for four vending machines in an R4 zone located at 4905 Walnut Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Let's deal with this, you guys, give me a motion. Move to suspend the readings?
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Height.
What's the, what's the question?
To suspend the readings.
Suspend the readings?
Yes.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to adopt?
Go move.
Second. Comments, questions? I guess one question, no. Ms. White?
The applicant is here, he did sign in, if you have any questions.
Okay, applicant here, answer any questions. Ms. White?
My question is, if this legislation wouldn't pass, will the structures remain there? That's just a question I asked.
That'd be a Sean question, maybe, come on up.
Sean, so we need?
My name is Johann Adenaharant, and if it didn't pass, I would have to remove them, yes. But I would reiterate, of course, you know, when we took the place over, we bought it in January of 2017, and the lady that I bought it from, her husband had passed away recently before that, and it was just going down the hill, you know, it wasn't being taken care of at all. And she put it on the market, and, you know, me and my wife, we took it over. And with that being said, we spent 1.7 million dollars to bring that area back, and in return, you know, we, we redid all the roofs on them, we installed brand-new siding, we actually installed over 250 windows on the apartment complex as well. There's a lot of them broken out, and it's just that complex is in a very good area, and I felt that I could bring it back, and so I made these changes to help, you know, pull some good people in there, and so that was, that's what I want to do.
And I will tell you that you did a great job. They look really good, and we're proud that you've taken the initiative to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. White?
Thank you, and they do look better, but can I still hear from Sean on that? If the legislation would not pass, would he be required to remove the buildings?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do we need, do we need to amend that in, or is that, is it okay the way it stands?
It's, it's okay the way that it stands. We have the building codes that would take care of, not building stuff.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Ms. Ross?
And this is, this is for Mr. Spencer. At the first planning commission meeting, I know that there was opposition from the neighbors, there was questions, and then at the next meeting, it seemed like everything had been worked out. Have you had any more complaints or concerns from any neighbors or concerning this legislation tonight?
After the first meeting, we had a couple calls of just what was going on, but no, nothing for or against, it was just, you know, what are they doing? And no one showed up really to the second meeting.
Okay.
And then the vote was five, four, and two, and two against.
Okay, all right, and then one more comment, too. As the owner, I know that you don't want to see any problems out there any more than we want to see any problems there, so, you know, I guess I'm looking for your assurance that if there is any problem, if this is causing, that you would immediately pull them out?
Absolutely. You know, because I don't want, I don't want my, my buildings being damaged just like anything else, you know, because, I mean, it's an investment that I took, you know, it's, you know, I'm trying to bring it back, you know, so, you know, if it doesn't work out, then yeah, I would have to pull them, because I can't afford, you know, say, for example, if the glass gets broken out of it, you know, they steal something out of it, just for example, if that was to happen, you know, I wouldn't, of course, you know, keep putting it in there, you know, I would, I would pull them out, you know, but I'm trying. You know, I'm trying to do the best I can, and these machines actually are brand-new, you know, I'm not putting anything used, you know, anything like that, and so they are really, really nice, you know, what we're putting in there, so.
I mean, I, I don't see the attraction, you know, the reason that you would want to put it there, it seems like it would cause you more heartache than it would make you money, but you're a successful businessman, obviously, so if that's what you want, we'll certainly go on it. Mr. Height?
At the last, we discussed this, what, a month ago here at the council meeting, two months ago, whatever.
Yes.
And it was my, my understanding that after that meeting, you were going to meet with the neighbors back up behind you and in that area, and y'all were going to work out some kind of media, some, in the middle, did y'all have that meeting?
Right, yeah, after, after that first meeting, we met outside, and I spoke with them. I think in the beginning, they were just a little unsure of who I was, you know, and what I was trying to do, because the lady who had it before me, they didn't care, you know, they just let it go down, and I would actually say in two or three years, that property would be condemned, you know, because all the windows that I had to replace, I mean, golly, I mean, I put in over 250 windows in that apartment complex. That's a lot of money, you know, and I spent a total of 1.7 million dollars to try to money, you know, and I spent a total of 1.7 million dollars to try to help bring it back for the city of North Little Rock, and so that's, I gave them that reassurance that I will take care of them, you know, if something ever happens, they can always call me, and I'm just trying to do the best I can and do it right.
Had these buildings been erected at that point in time, or have you erected these buildings, these sheds after that date?
Well, in the beginning, I didn't know that I had to apply for the permits, so I'll back up, you know, I've seen these hotels and these apartment complexes have vending machines at their site, and I said, well, you know, I, you know, I said, well, my tenants, yeah, I told my tenants about it, and they said, yeah, you know, I'd like to have that, you know, that'd be a good idea, so I brought it in, and then when it came time, you know, for my electricians and all that to hook it all up, you know, I came to the city of North Little Rock and I asked them, I said, hey, you know, you know, what would you guys need, and they said, well, you need to apply for a special use permit for this thing to pass, I said, okay, and so that's why I went through the process to, to help make that happen.
So you'd already erected the buildings before you got the permit?
Yeah, I've already erected them, I bought the machines, I mean, I didn't know, you know, I mean, I, so.
Let me ask you one thing, the openings on the shed, you got two up there, I believe, in that alley, face to the west, was there any consideration in turning those around 180 degrees and have them face to the east or face the backside of your apartments?
Well, the reason why I did that is because the parking is back there, and that way, they can, as soon as they get out of their car, they could just step out in the front instead of, because that's a big drop-off right behind, so that's why, for the safety of the tenants, I didn't want them to do that.
Even though the lights from the machines would be facing the houses on the other side of that alleyway, is that correct?
Right, yeah, I just did that out of the safety for them, because I put it further into the back, and that way, they could just step up and get whatever they need, so instead, if I turned it around, you know, then it's just, to me, I think it's a little bit more of a...
Are the lights in those buildings going to be on 24 hours a day? Or, yes?
Yes.
Alright, Sean, can I ask you a question, too, at the planning commission meeting, what was the recommendation of your office?
We were supportive of the neighborhood, so since no one had showed up at the second meeting, and we didn't receive a bunch of calls, we were in support of it.
Okay, thank you, thank you Mayor. On the motion?
Hold on, I'm having a hot flash. As are some other people.
It was cold in here when we first came in.
It's not cold now.
That's a power surge, that's not hot.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Baxter?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
No.
The motion failed.
Thank you.
01810 Councilmember Baxter?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 7509 Young Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R4 to C3 Zone by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property.
First reading.
Our street.
Move to suspend the readings?
There you go.
On the motion to suspend the readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Move for adoption?
There you go.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01811 Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 8888 to extend the time of a special use to sell topsoil and construct a new pond on certain property in an R2 zone located at 12602 Faulkner Lake Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from February 13th, 2018 to May 31st, 2018, first reading.
I may have an amendment on the timeframe, and speaking with the applicant, when we were talking about putting together the extension, I may have misjudged exactly much time they needed, but after visiting with her today, um...
You need a motion to do something first, a motion to suspend a reading or something first, there's nothing?
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings.
Okay, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Press on.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was so enthralled with Mauryce was saying, I forgot where I was.
I was too.
I'm so enamored, I was...
Alright, go ahead.
So we may need a little more time than what I initially thought, what were your thoughts on, on the timeframe?
I was thinking, May of 2019, or a year from today, just whatever's easiest for y'all, it's kind of one of those things where, you know, if we're not done, we're just going to be back up here, so, you know, a year and a few months would definitely be better than a year.
I'm fine with whatever, I mean, I know, I know what you guys are trying to do with the project, so I'm good with the timeframe, so...
What's your, what's your amendment, then, you want to change it to?
May of 2019.
Right.
Okay, I've got a motion to amend the date from May the 31st of 2018 to May the 31st of 2019.
Second.
And we have a second, on the motion to amend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Move for adoption is amended.
There you go.
Questions, comments, on the motion? Hold it, Ms. White?
Just one question, I know in the past, there's been question about business licenses, is that current?
Yes ma'am.
And it's like...
The current license, that is a question, the current license expires February 13th, do you want to allow that to be extended, because I believe you paid for the full fee?
Yes ma'am.
Do you want that extended until December 31st?
Sure.
Of the year.
Oh, so she's already...
She's already renewed, but she had to pay for the full year because of...
Oh, absolutely, that would only be right.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion, Ms. Ross?
No, and this is for, I guess it would be for Mr. Spencer, have there been any complaints for any neighbors or anything, or, I guess that's my question, have we heard anything?
I haven't heard anything.
On the dirt, on the dirt sales, nothing.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Height?
This is totally separate from the, from the concrete crushing operation, right?
Yes sir.
And we've already extended your, on that, to May, is that correct? This doesn't affect that in any way?
Absolutely not.
Can I ask a question, though, how's that coming?
Real well.
Is it?
On schedule, ready to be done, don't ever want to look at that again.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, Ms. Whitby?
To adopt is amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And we'll revise the current license and send that to you in the mail if that's okay. 01812 Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for comprehensive loss and business interruption insurance for the Murray Hydroelectric Plant, authorizing the mayor to execute an insurance agreement, first reading.
Move suspend the readings.
There you go.
On the motion to suspend all readings?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
About a motion to adopt?
So move.
Just for everybody's information, it went down again, I think this is the third year in a row, so we're really pleased. The same insurance company, correct? Everything? On the motion, yeah.
Who's second to get the motion?
Ms. Ross?
She needs us, who's second?
I need a second on the motion, thank you.
And, and once again, waiving the bids, because this is probably the only insurance company that insures hydro?
Well, there's actually, there's probably two.
There's two now?
Maybe, yeah.
I know at one time, there was only one.
And, you know, Eric's our agent, has been for 10 or 15 years, and he negotiates with these guys, he works with them, he knows them, so we're, we're pleased, I remember when it was a lot more than this, so, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01813 Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 8957 to correct the service fee rates for municipal street lighting, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings?
There you go.
On the motion to suspend all readings?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Mayor? About a motion to adopt?
So move.
Could James explain this to us, please?
Yeah, give me a second.
Okay.
Okay, Murray seconded, James, this is a correction of the one we did last week, I think, James can tell us.
This was already before y'all a couple of weeks ago, but I think a wrong exhibit got put into the document.
We had one about a month ago, and then we heard from you all that Exhibit B was wrong, so we amended that one the last time, and then I got an email from Mr. Ross, and last week, that the Exhibit A that we had gotten was also incorrect, so now we're amending it to correct the Exhibit A.
I meant the purpose, or the outcome, or the legislation was correct on what y'all passed, it's just the exhibits that were in there were incorrect.
Okay, are these our lights that are on private property, or is this for other municipal entities that we serve, just?
No, we had increases in night watchers, floodlights, any type of area lighting in the previous legislation, and we left the street lighting as was, because we're not complete with changing out the LEDs, it's going to take a couple of years to get that done, so we're just going to leave the rates as is until we get further along with that project.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So you're going to leave the rate like it is and just change out the light and just, and then adjust?
As we get farther along into, I mean, there's only two customers, city of North Little Rock and Sherwood.
Yeah, okay.
We just wait, we get farther along, and then start changing the rates, and it's a slow process, it's going to take maybe two and a half, maybe three years?
Yeah.
Get all that done.
I have a question, are you sure it's right this time, because each time we publish it in the paper, it costs about a hundred dollars, and that's coming out of my budget, so I, I just wanted to make sure.
James, did you bring your checkbook with you?
Bill Electric Bar.
Alright, anybody else, on the motion?
Mayor, does this obligate James to stay around until this project's complete, by any chance?
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Includes new business, oh, no, emergency clause, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now that concludes new business.
Thank you very much, public comments, Keith Fokes. Is here, lives at 509 Green Oak Drive. At three minutes, Mr. Fokes, thank you for being here.